Okay, good evening, I'm Tim Skagians, Chair of the Shastbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. First, let me check with the board, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening? No. First up is minutes. We have two sets of minutes that were circulated, we are still trying to get October 21, and we have tonight, Tim Skagians, Ken Harrington, and Tony Kurilikowski. So, just one of you three guys want to make a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Tony, seconded by Ken, any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes for October 21, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay, so that motion is approved, 3-0-2. And from our last meeting on November 18, is there a motion to approve those minutes as circulated? Moved by Tony, seconded by Art, any discussion, conditions or corrections on those minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, 1, so those minutes are approved, 4-0-1. And next up warrants. First on top is a tax refund warrant in the amount of $25,517.30. Motion to approve from Tony, seconded by Art.
I did that this way, which I've not done in previous years, because I want to get them out the door as soon as I can, and they're very time-consuming, so Joan is going to be able to do those in her spare time now that she has sort of preapproval for it. It's sort of the same way we do, you know, water and payroll, so it's not through the system, but it's, I think it's perfectly kosher.
These are people that paid their taxes even though the bank may have done it for them, things like that.
If you, if you're interested, you go through the paperwork and I give explanations for every single one of them.
Right, but what's the general thing?
In a lot of cases, they didn't realize that escrow was going to take care of it. In another case, in a lot of cases, they pay an earlier bill and then get a revised one, but they've already paid the higher amount. That was a few of them, so there are a few things that happened. One person paid, this was an interesting one, paid the full amount and then paid late again the full amount by credit card, which I can't even begin to tell you the headaches that that created. So don't do that, yeah, but there's a, there are various reasons.
Okay.
That's a, that's a, actually, that's a little bit less than usual, so people aren't making the same mistakes year after year.
Good.
Good. Any other discussion on tax refund warrant? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So, the tax refund warrant in the amount of $25,517.30 is approved, 5-0-0. All right, next I have water warrant, number 1, in the amount of $756. Motion to approve from Tony, seconded by Art.
Those are town water bills that I pay through a transfer, and I used to do it just without even telling you guys about it. So I started doing these warrants just to make sure that it's on record that I have done a bank transfer of that amount.
So this is our own water bill?
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining? So, water warrant number 1, in the amount of $756 is approved, 5-0-0.
That's not the schools, that's just our...
It's, uh...
Does the school have their own?
Coal Hall, the garage up until, you know, up until the new one, which is now in town, on the well, so we won't need to pay that one anymore, and the fire pump.
Next I have payroll warrant number 10, in the amount of $22,240.59. Motion to approve from Tony, seconded by Art, any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining? Payroll warrant number 10, in the amount of $22,240.59 is approved, 5-0-0. Okay, next I have check warrant number 14, in the amount of $2,089,202.48. Moved by Tony, seconded by Art, you didn't have any problem with that $2 million?
I was just going to ask you, if I do, you're going to explain.
It's all part of discussion.
I can guess that that is, you collected the taxes for the school and now you're giving it back.
Yeah, that's the MAU portion, you'll see there's a separate warrant for the, or is that the little, is that the one that's just one check? Yeah, that's that one, there's...
Just have that, and then the next is the check warrant.
Yeah, the other one is part of the big, the bigger warrant. Joan, over credit, was not comfortable creating a check for $2 million to an entity we have never paid before, but that's because of the brand-new school district, so that's why I took care of it. In the past, I've done those as transfers because I was the school treasurer as well as the town treasurer. I'm no longer school treasurer, so it has to be a check now. So that's why you're seeing, seeing that entity and that amount for the first time, you've never had to have that sticker shot before.
Yes, this is $2 million to Southwest Vermont UESD.
Yeah, Unified Education School District, I guess. Is that what it's called?
Yep.
Yeah, see, I thought it was UUSD, but...
I think it's E, and it meets elementary, probably elementary, Unified Elementary.
Unified Elementary School District, yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of giving back $2 million, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining? So, check warrant number 14, $2,089,202.48 is approved, 5-0-0. All right, and check warrant number 13, just a regular row of check warrant, in the amount of $1,904,109.96. Motion to approve from Tony, seconded by Art. Major items on this one are $1,843,043.85 to Mount Anthony Union High School District.
Yeah.
Other items over $1,000, $3,900 to Apache Marine. If Dave were here, he could tell us what that is, if you want, I can dig through the invoices here. Bennington County Sheriff for $2,600, business card services for $2,300, that's usually miscellaneous credit cards charges. $1,100 to GABO Fuels, $1,400 to GABO Fuels, $2,700 to Home Depot Credit Services, $3,500 to Merch, Mer, Merjay Snow for delinquent tax payment.
That was somebody who made a credit card payment, and I have to, they did, they made a credit card payment late, so we need to return that money to Merck so he can work his magic and then send it back to us again.
$2,400 to Morris Repair, $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for November cemetery mowing, $29,000 to Legal Cities and Towns, that would be our dues, it says, but it's also our insurance now. $1,600 to Wells Communications Service, I'm not sure what that one is. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Melanie, when, when somebody doesn't pay their taxes, we're still liable for the school, that money...
Yeah, I essentially can talk about that later, if you want to, hold on, I've got a whole dog and pony show about that. Yeah, but the short answer is, we are on the hook for whatever the state says we have to send to school.
Yep.
Yeah, when Merck goes out and collects taxes, he collects school taxes.
Yes, all year round taxes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant 13, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining? So, check warrant number 13, $1,904,109.90 is approved, 5-0-0. Any announcements?
Christmas, or tree lighting?
December 8th?
December 8th, 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock.
Cookies and, oh, cookies and Santa.
Very good. I will be here. Scrooge.
I am.
Okay, as for our personnel policy, that is coming up on the time when we announce upcoming openings in town government, and they include, on the select board, there are two expiring terms. On the planning commission, there is an open seat and one expiring term. On the DRB, there is one open seat, there is an open alternate seat, there may actually be two alternates, I'm not sure how many they are used to having, but they haven't, haven't had alternates for a long time. There are no expiring terms on the DRB. Any public comments? Treasurers' report, Melanie.
Okay, I don't have any reports because the most recent payroll was last Wednesday, and Joan hasn't gotten me the paperwork to do that, so it would be incomplete report. So, I'll sort of close out November at the next meeting. I did want to talk about the delinquent taxes, I misspoke at the last meeting pretty badly. I was comparing apples to oranges in a way that was very misleading, and our, our delinquent taxes are actually not what I said. They're, this year, they're about, I think it's 4.6% of the total taxes collected, which makes it about, I don't know, 12 or so percent of municipal taxes, which is really a better way to look at it for the reason we were just talking about. We are not allowed not to send the, the school money, that's an obligation. So, this year, the delinquent taxes were about just under $260,000. That is in line with how it always is, it goes, I looked at a few past years, and it was a high of $308,000 one year and a low of, I think it was $246 or something, so it's right in there. It's that, this year's actually about 4% lower than the average of the past several years. So, you know, all the things we've done to make it easier for people to pay, it might be working a little bit at the edges, but that, that core number is, is pretty unbudgetable. But, yeah, as, as I did say kind of quickly, all of that is municipal money, so if you think of it in terms of our, our budget, it's actually a fairly significant chunk, but, but then Merck chips away at it through the year, and, and, you know, it's, it's a moving, moving target, but that's where, in the warrant that I sent him last week, that was the, the figure of uncollected taxes, that he's going to be going after people for it. Is that clear?
To my mind, it's 4.6%, because that includes school and town taxes that are delinquent. To say that that 4.6...
But 100% of the taxes went to the school, so I, I think that it's really more...
So we end up with a burden of delinquent taxes that's, compared to our budget, is 12%.
Yeah.
But it's not all our tax money, and, yeah, I, I see where there are two ways you can look at it.
Yeah, I, um, Bill used to look...
If you wanted to look at it in terms of people who are not paying their taxes, it would be like 4.6%.
No, it's not pe, that wouldn't be people, that would be dollars, but not, not people. That the, it's not necessarily the average delinquency is the same as the average tax bill.
Well, what I'm saying is, the 12% is inflated because it takes this tax bill, school plus town, and compares it to the town budget.
I just never looked at it that way before, I thought it was kind of interesting. It's not a number that we do anything with or think about, I just thought it was kind of an interesting way of looking at it. I could also look at the total number of people delinquent, that's down this year too, so, and that's maybe more, more interesting. Also, there are delinquencies that are $5, you know, there are, there are delinquencies that are $8,000, so, so they're not all the same by any means. I had a lot of delinquencies that were less than 20 cents this year. I think people like to mess with me a little bit, they write their checks for, I had, I had six that were one penny off on credits, and sorry, you don't get those, you don't get a check for a penny. Yeah, so I think that's just to keep me honest, but, so there were a few of those, but they don't go to Merck.
They just don't want your columns to add up, do they?
So far, they always have. Any questions about any of that stuff?
So you're saying that if somebody doesn't pay their taxes, we've got to pay the school, school board regardless?
Yes.
We get to be the last, the fourth in line they get?
It's because basically I am not working as the town treasurer when I am collecting those school taxes. We have no say over that money at all, that we're working on behalf of the, the state, and the state is...
Well, yeah, is that a state law or is that just...
Yeah.
But when Merck does collect it, it all, all comes to us. We don't have to pay.
Right.
Because we already paid the school.
Right, yep.
Yeah, I see, I see the logic of both numbers.
Yeah.
Because if we don't go out and collect it, we're going to be 12% short on our budget.
And this, this school never, never has to suffer.
We're going to love the little children.
That's right, absolutely. Okay?
Okay, good, thank you. If you'd like to take these documents and lock them up, and you might as well take the minutes with you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rhodes' report. I talked to Mike just an hour ago, and he said that Mike pretty much stayed ahead of the storm pretty well. I know Art was out and about early this morning.
They were out before 5 o'clock, it was 4, a little after 4, I think, when I saw him.
Yeah, my road was loud when I, when I got out of bed. He said they are planning to sand in the morning, they held off on sanding because they are expecting more snow during the day today.
The pack down, so it's slippery tonight, so people need to be careful.
There's a two-hour delay already for tomorrow?
Yes, two-hour delay in school. Oh. Good luck with that. And as far as, you know, general activity, they are doing what they can in terms of winter maintenance, which is mostly brush clearing and cutting down some trees here and there, and keeping the, the equipment maintained for events such as this. Art, Ken, do y'all have anything to, to offer? Okay, we are due at 7 o'clock to hold a hearing on the town plan. It's a little bit before that, so without objection, we will move on through the rest of the agenda, and be prepared to take that up at 7. I just wanted to mention in terms of internet and the Communication Union District, we voted to put on the ballot, on the March Town Meeting ballot. We've had a couple of meetings, maybe just one meeting of our in-house task force since then, and one select board meeting that I know of, which was Sunderland, who also voted to put the question on their town meeting ballot. As I said before, we've got 11 towns represented in the group so far.
Is Bennington one?
They are not, but discussions are happening with Bennington, and we're expecting them to put it on their ballot as well, but that has not happened yet, but yet we are...
But they're one of the 11.
They're not one of the 11.
Oh, they are one of them.
No. But other members of the task force have reached out to the Bennington Select Board and received favorable consideration, so it's going to come up at their next meeting. And, so that's where we are with that. I guess I could state again for the people who may not be following it closely is that a Communication Union District is an entity that allows a group of towns to come together and figure out a solution for broadband internet for people that don't have it, and it's, it is formed by agreement of towns, by putting it on their town meeting ballot, which you will see on our ballot. The important thing to consider when, when you vote on it is that this Communication Union District will never cost the town taxes by law, by state law. Taxes cannot be obligated to communications infrastructure. So, these, this Communication Union District, what it does is it goes out, gets together a group, a governing board, seeks grants, loans, and then tries to entice an internet service provider based on those grants and bonds to do a build-out for them, and then those grants or those loans are paid for through the revenues collected by people who are buying the internet service. But it is, it is the, essentially, the way it looks like this will get done in Vermont that gets done in the Act 59 that recently passed the legislature, Act 59, 79, Act 79, also called H513, the Broadband Bill. It's built around this idea that this is what towns will do, is they'll create these districts, they'll figure out how to do it in a more or less local, regional level. So that is progressing. The other item, item 10, should we vote our town budget by Australian ballot or, as we have been, by floor vote at town meeting? Ken, you have brought that up, we've been going back and forth on it. I'll let you make your case again for it.
Well, that's been over the years, the people have been coming to my speech, and it's been said and argued, and you get over there, you get 25 people, you have to dig in some great idea, they want to bust the budget for $10 billion, I mean, I'm getting, we're getting busted by them. I think you're going to get a lot more asked, if you go to the Australian ballot. I just, I just think there's, I don't think people come over here anymore.
I was going to say, do you feel someone's going to push a false narrative while they're there?
Well, that's never happened, but, you know, stranger things have happened, I suppose.
I know one thing, I, I mean, I do know, just being a resident, things, you know, would come up being voted on, like, wow, I don't remember, you know, hearing about that or voting, you know, voting on that. I also think that, you know, with that being said, that you should advertise, I guess, the, when things are going to be voted on, there's a lot of things now, and I don't go, you know, looking for it, but we don't really put it out there, do we?
Well, we certainly try. Communicating with the citizenry is one of the bigger problems that we have, how we get the word out.
We have cat TV.
We have cat TV. I have said many times that I think our best method of communication with the citizens is that sandwich sign on the corner, but that seems to get...
Oh, yeah, that, that's very effective, although the local people who live here, yeah.
Best we have, which, again, is not great, it's, in modern terms, it's fewer characters than a tweet.
What about advertising on the local radio station?
On WBTN?
Yep.
Honestly, you're the only person I know that listens to you.
They have to ask somebody to listen.
You already know, because you're here, so... Any other comments on that? What we're debating is whether or not we put it on the ballot as a question for the citizenry. We're not going to decide it here, it has to be decided by the citizens. So, if we vote tonight, it would be to put the question, should we vote our budget by Australian ballot, on the Australian ballot, for town meeting?
Well, we try. And of course, the, the other side of this, my argument is, is that if somebody doesn't like some part of the budget, they've got to vote the whole thing out.
Right, correct.
Because if, if there's something in the budget they want to talk about or have discussed, they don't have any, there's no way that it can be done, because the number we have to present several days before, because the ballots have to be printed, is, is what's locked in.
Right.
Granted, at the floor vote, they cannot change a line item, but they can, but if there is a vote at the floor to change a toll, we usually adhere to what they wanted as far as line item, understand what I'm saying?
Right.
But, so, that, that would be my concern, is if somebody, if someone wants something different in the budget, they have to vote the whole thing out.
But there's an opportunity while the budget's being formulated.
Here.
Here.
Yes, that's true, how many people?
Well, I mean, that, that's their obligation.
Yes.
You know, I'm thinking, I'm moving toward the Australian ballot because we now have TV and realizing that there is a large audience of people out there watching this debate all the time, or this, this meeting.
So they, they should be informed that, that they have a, they can come and...
Right.
Come to the meeting and talk about it, okay?
Because the old days, it was the only way you could change that whole budget was to go to attend the town meeting, and that's where all the business was conducted, and the debate would go on. But you never, I mean, as much as the selectmen tried to drive the agenda, oftentimes the agenda is what the people want. You know, I've been to town meetings where it has done a 180 and become a lynch mob. So, yeah, I, you know, I, I'm in favor of it, Ken.
That discussion just reminded me, one thing that probably we, we would want to do if we had an Australian ballot budget vote, and we could even do now, is put the draft budget up on the web for people to look at.
I was going to say, we need to educate the voters, because we can't, so nobody sits back and says, why do you know about that?
Yeah, that happens now by way of the Town Report, which people can then vote on or at town meeting, but if we did go that route, people would want information sooner, as you say, while we're debating the budget in, in the fall.
Actually, I like to strongly draft, draft.
Yeah, I was persuaded when I looked up that most towns now vote their budget by Australian ballot. That seems to be the, the way most towns have gone in. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Ken that... Yeah, I kind of agree with Ken that the participation is going down. You know, with the town floor vote, we're looking at less than one percent of the voters probably are voting on the town budget compared to, you know, I think the numbers are twenty to forty percent of, is what we get in terms of turnout. So what I'm thinking is, we need to decide this so that we can move on to other things, and let David start nailing down the ballot. Is there a motion to place on the March ballot, shall the town of Shasbury vote its budget by Australian ballot?
That would be Ken's vote.
Moved by Ken?
Second.
Second by Tony. Any more discussion?
I just, I think, I just want to note that it's not unanimous. I don't want the people to think that the Select Board is driving this. But we're living it up to now, okay?
Yes, yes, we are putting the question to the people. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So it's five zero zero? Okay. So we will put the question to the people on the town meeting ballot, shall the town of Shasbury vote its budget by Australian ballot? Okay, that takes us to seven oh two, and we can officially start the town plan hearing. So I am going to call the town plan hearing to order at seven oh two on Monday, December second, 2019. This is the second hearing of the Select Board, following a hearing by the Planning Commission. I would like to state again that the Planning Commission has done a superb job with this town plan. This was not your usual town plan rewrite, this was a complete redo. And they have done a great job, and it is a town plan that is an actual to-do list for this town. And the to-do list is up in the front of the document where you can see it. And they rewrote it completely, eliminated lots and lots of paragraphs, and it's a really lean, lean document, I'm really proud of it. And I commend all of them for the work they've done. It was a years' worth of work getting to this point. And at that point, I would open it up to the floor. I see we have several members of our Planning Commission here. I think they are interested in making some changes that we will consider favorably, I suspect. I'm going to bring up a version of the document that includes what we, as a board, voted to do at our meeting on November fourth, plus a few suggestions that have come in along the way, some from our recreational committee, and a few other things, tweaks here and there, some of them are typographical. But at this point, I'd like to open the floor. Chris Williams, Chairman of our Planning Commission.
Thanks for your kind words, Tim. It was a big effort, and we feel pretty confident in the document that we've produced. I, in my report, I talked about pieces that I thought maybe could be improved on, and you've changed some wording to reflect that, much appreciated. I think that one piece that worries me a little bit is a clear statement in the energy chapter about solar development in Shasbury. And we've gone from, well, we don't have data on where we were at the last town plan, but I think the answer is we were pretty close to zero net metering installations of solar energy in Shasbury. And the latest count, which we obtained from the Public Service Board, was eighty-four. And so this represents an exponential growth in homeowners who have adopted solar energy. They think it makes economic sense, it's a good investment. And we're starting to see applications now for utility-scale solar. This is not homeowners, this is people who want to do this as a business, that want to make money investing in solar energy. There was a five hundred KW installation, which we haven't seen built yet, up here on the hill near the water treatment plant. There was a hundred and fifty KW installation over on State Line Road by New York State border. We presently have an outstanding application to consider for a hundred and fifty KW installation in the same region out by Shasbury Hollow on Salicanon Road. We haven't really delved into the details of that one yet, but what I'm trying to put forward is the idea that this is something that's growing, that this is something that in the eight years of the town plan, we're apt to see a lot of activity in this area. There are a lot of variables that could change that, but I think it seems pretty likely, given what state policy and incentives are, that this will continue to grow at a surprising rate. And we have a lot of land in Shasbury, especially the south shoulder of West Mountain, Myers Road, West Mountain Road. That whole area has great solar exposure. We're going to see growth out in that region, for sure. And surprisingly, all these applications haven't been from that area. So I wanted to be clear, because I think we're going to be tested on this, is that Shasbury, and the Select Board has voted this, as I understand it, that we are in favor of this kind of development, that we are not going to put restraints on it above and beyond what the Public Service Board sees. So that language is a little squirrely in this town plan on that issue, and I'm concerned for clarity, and that we make a clear statement of what the intent of the town plan is, because I think we're going to have to rely on it.
Yes, thank you, Chris. I should mention, I was waiting, in case there were members of the public here, to offer their input, but we did get the report from the Planning Commission on the changes that we made to the town plan. Chris referenced it, the board has seen it through email, and it makes reference to a couple of things, energy being one of them. And if you want to jump to that part, I did make some changes, trying to accommodate your suggestions there. I feel a little boxed in at this point, because the energy section is, has a lot of state influence in it. The state has very strong ideas about what energy policy is in this state and where we should be, for example, in 2050, which is ninety percent renewables. And the state, with their influence on the regional planning commissions, BCRC, who helps us extensively with our plan, there's a lot of stuff in there that reflects those goals. And a lot of, a lot of those things, it's felt by the regional planning commission, need to be in the town plan. Chris, if I can, we can talk about the energy part a little bit. I'm, I agree, it could be clear, but at this stage, I am afraid, frankly, to get too much into it, because BCRC, at the Planning Commission's request, reviewed the town plan in terms of its legality. That's the main thing, that at this stage of the game, the Planning Commission and with the help from BCRC is required to tell us that we haven't made any changes to the plan that don't pass legal muster. It has passed legal muster. Chris has hopefully gone on to say some things that might be said differently. And in terms of the statement, our statement as a board about our desire to see solar development happen here, I thought I made that stronger by taking these two statements that were as action items. The town should not institute zoning or other ordinances that would limit renewable energy development. And the other one, the town should not impose screening or other restrictions on renewable energy development beyond those imposed for other types of building or industry. And I felt I upgraded those to a policy in this change. The town of Shasbury will not impose screening or other restrictions on renewable energy development beyond those imposed for other types of building or industry. So in order to do what you were saying with the fewest changes to the overall document, make it very clear in the first policy statement of the energy section, and again, make notes, Select Board, this is not say should, it says will not impose screening or other restrictions on renewable energy development beyond those imposed for other types of building or industry. Do you think that clarifies anything?
As I said in email today to you, that that's not as strong a statement as the earlier statement that the town will not implement any zoning or ordinances that restrict renewable energy development. That's a very clear-cut statement. And the statement that it won't be greater than what is imposed on other types of buildings, I'm not sure where that might go.
Well, the first statement, it pretty much says you can put solar panels where you want. That can't be so.
Yes, that is our stated policy.
So all throughout the town, down the strip, the aesthetic value and country charm just doesn't matter anymore? Okay.
We feel that the importance of renewable energy is, moving toward renewable energy is important enough that we might even have to look at it. That's not the general statement in most towns, but it is the statement in our town. So you're saying you would rather just leave it the way it is? Do you don't think this helps any, or you think it actually weakens it?
I just think the original statement is clearer.
And is the original statement the two action items in the
Yeah, the original statement was the policy that says, reduce the use of fossil fuels for both heating and transportation, and the two actions should not institute zoning or other ordinances that limit renewable energy development, and should not impose screening or other restrictions.
Well, that's your language. You know, in fairness, this section is written by BCRC. And I wrote the energies chapter myself, I thought it was one of my better pieces of work. And BCR, and I sent it to BCRC for comment, and it came back twice as long, and none of my wording was included. And I kept hammering on this one point, which was that we should not impose ordinances or zoning restrictions on renewable energy, which I thought had been clearly passed as a policy by the Select Board. I wanted a clear statement, and so I inserted that into the BCRC language, which is kind of all over the map, in truth. And we maybe could have done a better editing job of that. You know, there's a long discussion about what constitutes preferred sites, language taken from the Public Service Board. But it doesn't add any clarity to the intent of the chapter. And so, you know, there's a push from the state that we develop a town energy plan, which is a very cumbersome process, involves mapping the whole town for solar exposure and connectivity to the grid of three-phase power, yada, 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 it's very technical stuff. And the purpose of the whole exercise is to be able to have a voice with the Public Service Commission on the application. This was instituted as a reaction of the legislature to towns who were grumbling that they didn't have any control of their landscape because they couldn't vote on this. This was the purview of the Public Service Board. And I don't think it's worked very well. And as an example, I say, well, you just have to witness Bennington, which has tried to institute this thing. They've mapped their whole town, they've mapped view sheds, they've mapped areas that have historical districts, and they've gone to court a lot. And the results of controlling solar development have been very mixed. And they've had a lot of grief, in my opinion, as a result of it. So I think going down, we've resisted going down this road, but state policy is trying to push us in this direction, and some of it has dribbled through into our town plan.
Yeah, well, I'm, it sounds to me like what I have changed here is not helpful, so I'm thinking we go back to what we had originally on that.
What's the difference between a policy and an action item?
A policy is a general principle that guides what we do. An action item is something that is on our to-do list. And in this case, yeah, they're kind of, in some cases, it's kind of vague where you cross over from one to the other. In this case, I thought by making it a policy of not imposing restrictions, that was stronger, but that doesn't seem to be the consensus, so I'd think we would put that back.
It doesn't say the same thing, the policy says the same thing as the action item?
Yeah, it's a restatement of it.
Does it matter where it is?
Well, it's like the policy is the right place, because this is the overriding principle, the guiding principle.
That's what I'm thinking.
I agree.
Yeah.
Would you like the policy to be, the town should not impose, the town should not institute zoning or other ordinances that would limit renewable energy development?
Yeah, we talked about this, the phrase, the town should not additionally regulate renewable energy development beyond what the Public Service Board requires.
Okay. And that, you want that as a policy or action?
A policy. It could just be a sentence right after the sentence, as you leave the current sentence, and there's the second sentence saying, you know, the town does not seek to additionally regulate was the specific phrase.
I think it's also important, if we could go back and look at the original goal that's above this, you can't see it now, you only see achieved ten percent, but it's a pretty big goal. And I think when you look at that, and then you come down to policies and actions, I think it's, you know, I think to start with any conversation, I think you've got to start with the goal itself, and that comes from the state. I think that helps to, right now, we haven't done that yet, but I think that's important.
Did I get it? The town does not seek to regulate renewable energy beyond that imposed by the Public Service Board?
Okay.
Okay, and then these tasks, they should stay? The town should not institute zoning or other ordinances that would limit renewable energy development, or is that part of the policy as well?
I think it's part of the policy now, because
So make those three sentences policy, and then no actions?
The first one would be like a negative act, you know, it's a don't take action essentially, so. You know what I'm saying?
It's, yeah. It's, yeah. Okay, well, that destroyed the formatting, but I'll work on that later. Okay, so then this one is not an action. This one is now a policy, part two. Okay, and this one I just moved to. The town energy committee will provide information about Brock Neighbor Works and other organizations that provide free and reduced cost weatherization. I just moved that down to the section on energy efficiency in buildings.
Okay, makes sense.
I think before we move on, it's that the town should not institute, back in the policy we just changed, did that get, something else pop back up there?
The town of Shasbury will not impose screening or other restrictions on renewable energy development beyond those imposed for other types of building and industry. The town does not seek to regulate renewable energy beyond that imposed by the Public Service Board.
It's out there, so beyond that should maybe be on regulations imposed. So just change the word that to regulations, I think would be more clear.
Imposed by the Public Service Board.
Yep.
The town should not institute zoning or other ordinances that would limit renewable energy development.
Okay.
Okay. Is that agreeable to the board?
Yes.
Okay. We can do a save as here. I'm not sure what happened, let me try again.
You needed it today.
Okay.
Deb, I have a question. Maybe this is not, maybe I'm just thinking of something that would never happen. But assuming you had a building lot and it was best sun exposure and everything. And it perched that in, everything met all the requirements to put a, a house out there. Somebody commanded, and while they wanted the same guy, different guy wanted the lot, but he wanted to put in a solar thing. Who's going to win? The house or the solar plant?
According to this, the solar plant.
I mean, maybe it's not, maybe it's not even the wrong question, I don't know.
We aren't putting any restrictions on the other one.
No.
Yeah, I mean, we don't tell people where they can't build houses.
Yes, you do, because if it's, if it don't pass for a septic, you can't put it there.
That's right.
You don't have to worry about that with a solar.
The state regulates that. The state regulates the, the septic.
I understand, I'm just trying to, I don't want to close that land that could be used for a house or a developer, to put in something that, that could necessarily go where nothing else can go.
Oh, yeah, no, we're, we're making great pains to take hands off to solar. So we're not telling people where to put it.
No, I don't think, I just, maybe I'm not saying it right.
Yeah, I don't understand the question.
So if, if the houses, so you're saying that if it's buildable for a house?
Yeah.
And for solar, which one would win?
Yes, yeah, because you can put solar anywhere. You can put solar on a solid ledge.
You could put solar on top of the house.
On top of the house, right.
Oh, yeah, we're saying.
I'm not saying don't build the solar, I'm just saying, don't say I can't build my house over here because somebody wants to put a solar plant there.
It's the same argument as, as at Fawn Time, we wouldn't let solar be put on prime agricultural land. But now, you know, we aren't doing that anymore. I think what he's trying to say is that he's afraid that solar is going to trump a building lot.
Right.
It's all economics, whatever one, somebody wants to pay for that lot.
Right, yeah, the, what, what gets built there is decided by the owner of the lot, yeah.
That's right.
Right, well, yeah, like I said, solar can go anywhere. It can go on the trough, it can go on ledge, it can go, you can't just build a house with a septic system anywhere. It's got to pass the state rules. And I'm not trying to follow that, I'm just saying, there is a difference there. So you, I think you've got to dilute that curve, and that just gets solar in the upper hand for everything.
But if, but if a lot owner wanted to pay for that lot?
Yeah.
Listen to what I'm saying is that whichever one he wants to spend the money on,
Oh, no, I don't.
They want to spend the money on.
Yeah.
It's economics.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, if they want to pay, you know, forty thousand dollars for an acre of lot and put a solar panel on it.
Absolutely.
Fine, it'd be foolish, but.
I know.
Isn't, doesn't the state already have the, the state map for solar? I seem to remember a couple of years ago, somebody from somewhere coming to speak at Rotary about all of the state being surveyed for solar. And a lot of it, a huge percentage of it was not being used. It was in areas that nobody had ever even thought of.
There's a map included in this town plan.
Right.
Which shows solar exposure lands that are not, what's the word they're using there? There's no, what am I trying to say? There's no prohibition on developing. In other words, there are prohibitions about natural communities, rare and endangered species, deer, wintering yards, fernal pools. So there, these are going to be imposed by the state.
Yeah.
You know, just as the state has septic rules that are going to be imposed. So it's not as if what we're saying here is anywhere, anytime.
Doesn't make sense.
Go crazy.
No.
That's not what's going on. There are limitations to this. And, and we will be enforcing them at the local level as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, contrary to what Ken just said, there are lots of sites that are not suitable for solar. North-facing sites, shaded sites.
Yeah.
You know, so there's a map in the town plan that shows areas of best exposure and connectivity to three-phase power grid.
Yeah.
These might not be the final determinants because the application we have for us now doesn't connect to a three-phase power source, power line. So, you know, I question those things. And it's not mandated, it's, we think these are the incentives that drive it. And that's not always correct.
Okay, let me go back to the planning conditions document here. You didn't like the word alternative heating systems. I used the word energy efficient heating systems.
Thank you.
So I made that change in the document. Another sentence here, another option is to, is to incorporate some of the energy functions into the zoning administrator's job description. Mike, did you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do, well, I was confused over the use of the energy board, if that's what they're being called, energy committee, which I don't know what that is. I don't know who's on it yet. I don't know if it's an actual town energy committee, but you guys referenced it twice. Once with Brock and once with sort of providing information, this one here, that third action, that's under twelve point one there now. I don't know, again, this is an eight-year document. I don't know if this town energy committee will be around and what their actual power to do anything. To me, I was joking, I was like, it's like giving it to an idiot committee, it's not real. It's unless you guys rec, you know, recognize it and say, I'm all in favor of that. But I think when you look at the goals that we put on our town plan that the state recommended we put in, and so did B C R C, you've got to get some teeth. And if you really want to try to make a difference, and in my opinion, one person make it is a difference. And if you're going to give that task to the town energy committee, that town energy committee should be a legitimate town sanctioned, voted for, however you guys like the planning committee is. I don't see, especially when Shelley Stiles said that as zoning administrator, she's got more than enough time on her hands, she's in this town office. She's the one taking in, building permits and talking to builders. I just feel like this should be the hub of where information is going to be given out in order to meet these pretty drastic goals. Giving it to an energy committee that honestly, I know Ben Ullot's on it. I don't know when they meet, I don't know where they meet. I, there should be more people on it, I know, I don't. That's my fault. But I think if, if as a board and as something, a document that we're going to have for eight years, it should be given to a sort of a, whatever the word is, I don't want to use the word legitimate, sanctioned or mandated or unofficial. What's that?
Institutionalized.
Institutionalized, something that, that we can go back to and say, hey, when's your meeting? I want to go. Or it shouldn't have to be calling someone's house cell phone and saying, hey, are you guys going to meet this week? Or, you know, it should be something that we should be able to come into town hall. And that I think answers a lot of the other concerns about us not having a hub for the town, for people. This would be another reason for people to come into town to get basic information on, just people being curious. And maybe you could have someone come in and speak on it, but at least Shelley, who's here anyway, three days a week and has, has asked for that responsibility, she would have that responsibility and give out information on efficiency Vermont programs, things like this. There's already pamphlets downstairs. So I just feel like it makes a better fit for me, especially when we're, we're referencing this town energy committee. I, yeah, I don't know who, I don't know what that is. So that would be my concern on both and, on both of the references on the town energy committee.
So what if we said task the town energy committee and the zoning administrator with providing information on energy efficient heating systems?
Or any energy efficient cost savings? I mean, this is for all people that are looking for any benefit for, and this thing's that come up all the time. In fact, the last couple of months, I got an email from Efficiency Vermont. It said, guess what, you've got one more month, they had extra money. If you buy this low particulate yodel stove, you're going to get six hundred dollars back. And, you know, for a thousand something dollar stove, we pay three hundred dollars. And it's a low particulate stove, they just want to see your old one carted in. So I mean, these are real, and if even one more person takes that, it's just a little less in the air and we're sort of meeting some of those big goals. I mean, those are big goals. And I think that we need something that, that's going to put some teeth to making that happen, rather than just handing it off to something I don't know.
Well, getting the word out, awareness, and collectively, everybody does their part.
Right, I love the idea of both. Right, both would be great, but I think we should have something.
So how about this, I've got task the town energy committee and the zoning administrator with providing information on energy efficient heating and build, and building systems. Did I get it?
Because that would cover insulation probably as well, which is a lot of money out there now for Fawn.
Is that agreeable to the board?
Who, who, who hires or who is in charge of the zoning administrator?
We are.
And not the, and not the D R V?
No, line commissioner is, yes. We hire Shelley and we have annual reviews of her performance.
And so you can make this her, one of her responsibilities?
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll take this as a.
I, I didn't want to make it the, the responsibility of, of the energy committee that isn't really officially formed.
Okay, I see.
I wanted somebody that would.
Right, I think that's why we almost maybe, maybe flip the task, the zoning administrator and the energy. Maybe just flip the order of those two, so the zoning administrator looks superior to the town energy committee.
Yes.
Because that was the idea, was to kind of include a bullet point maybe in the zoning administrator's job description that kind of codifies it, because Shelley could move on, you know, this, this puts it somewhere in writing.
Yes.
That it exists for a future Z A.
Yes.
And, and that Z A is encouraged to coordinate with that town energy committee and if, if possible, outsource that job to them. But the zoning administrator is ultimately responsible for it. And, and like Mike said, this energy committee may wax and wane as the years go by and it gives the.
But for now, I think this, I think the energy committee should be informed of Shelley's responsibilities, okay?
I agree.
So they can work together on it.
Yeah.
All right?
Okay. And we are still tasking the energy committee with providing information about Brock Neighbor Works and other organizations that provide free and reduced cost weatherization, and reduced cost weatherization. So that I really have been pushing the energy committee to do, because that's about getting out and talking to people. That's not people who come in with a, requesting a permit to build a house. That's people who live in the village who don't know that they could probably get their windows insulated for free. Okay, a couple of typographical corrections there. That gets us into that part, is there anything else in the energy? Okay, yeah, your two points here are about promoting energy efficiency in buildings and then the confusing language in that section. Are we, do you think we've corrected that to your satisfaction? Or at least as far as we're willing to go at this stage of the editing process?
Well, one of the things, as I read it over today, that, that jumped out at me was kind of like the hesitancy to say that we're going to require new buildings to be high performance. That it doesn't make any sense that in the second decade of the 21st century, that we're building buildings that don't meet state energy code. Now, residential construction in Vermont has always been exempt from everything. There's no building codes that govern residential construction. But, you know, these are the buildings that we're going to live in for fifty, sixty, a hundred years. They're going to be around for a long, long time. The idea that we're not building to the, to a really rigorous standard, just.
Chris, when you say high-performance building, is that more like high efficiency?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. In other words, it's like that, you know, I'm not talking about the, the outer edges, which is net zero buildings. But, you know, just what's required by state energy code, which does not cover residential structures, that, you know, it just makes common sense that we build the next generation of buildings to a higher standard. That, you know, we live in the climate that right outside the door is terrible. And we should, we should, this is not a punishment for people. This is, this is helping them to have sustainable lives. That their energy costs are going to be manageable. And that, you know, this generation of buildings should be at that level because it, we know how to do it. It's not even experimental in any way. It's not alternative anything. This is like, this is what good building construction is in these days.
Well, you're suggesting that we, that we, Shasbury, create a department to enforce local building codes?
We've really shied away from that. We think that there's problems with enforcement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to get at what it is you would like to see us do.
Well, the wording said we should consider requiring.
Are you talking about existing structures or new homes?
New, new, new construction. I'm only talking about new construction.
Yeah.
Okay, the, the, I think I know.
We should consider requiring that, that there's a certification by the builder or the homeowner, I can't remember which it was, that this meets residential energy code.
Consider requiring that copies of energy code certification be submitted to the zoning administrator for all new buildings constructed as part of the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance.
Consider requiring. Consider requiring, that doesn't sound like the same thing as requiring.
Yeah. Consideration.
And I Yeah, I, uh, well, my inclination is to leave that there, because I don't know that I fully understand the implications
Right.
of requiring, uh, that for that certificate of zoning compliance. But it, I would certainly be willing to, uh, listen to the planning commission, if they wanted to go on to tell us what, uh, what's implied there and how we, how we do it.
Well, what we don't want to do is develop a town of Shaftesbury Code Enforcement Bureau.
Right.
You know, but
Yeah, I think here we're talking about that in certain circumstances, like for a loan, the, the, the zoning administrator is asked to write a certificate of building compliance. And we could, uh, as part of our doing that, in order to allow somebody to get a loan, uh, require that that state energy codes be followed.
What is an energy code cer- certification?
I'm sorry, what, Tony?
What, what is an energy code certificate? How do you become certified?
It, it's, it's a state requirement right now. And, you know, we've kind of been half in and half out in terms of how we handle it locally. Uh, it's one of those things that, you know, Montpelier is far away and there's very little enforcement.
So who, does somebody from the state require every new structure in a town to have an energy code certification?
The builders would certify that this meets the state requirements. So it's, the onus is on the builder.
So that's commercial, it's not?
No, 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 that's
Overall?
Overall, commercial is, is much more rigorous.
Okay.
And it is enforced at the commercial level, because Department of Safety has, has the enforcement action on those. And you know what, I'm a little fuzzy on this myself, so I admit to my lack of depth of knowledge on this subject.
So I mean, if, if it's a, if it's a legal document, there's a difference between that and a builder saying, yeah, it's on the code.
Okay, well, as Shelley has described it to us, there is a, you know, a, a state protocol for certifying new buildings. And, and that's the extent of my knowledge.
Walk, walk me through what, if somebody buys a lot and comes to the, and goes to Shelley for to build a house there, what? We got the curb cut, got setback. These are all things that the D R B considers, is that right? And what point can the D R B say you have to have this energy thing?
The, D R B typically doesn't get involved in residential construction.
That's what I'm saying.
As of right.
That's what I'm saying, so how, how are we going to, who, if the D R B doesn't do it, who does?
The zoning administrator. The way it was described, I think, is that if you don't have a zoning letter of compliance, then it's difficult to get, so a second owner coming to purchase your property would have trouble getting a loan, because they wouldn't be able to obtain that zoning letter of compliance. So I guess what we're, what we're, what we'd be saying is that the initial builder has to self-certify that they complied with state law. And then, say, ten years down the line, when that initial owner went to sell the property, there'd be no problem obtaining the zoning letter of compliance from the Z A and giving that to the bank, the lender.
Yeah.
What we'd be saying here is that we're requiring you to do that, rather than suggesting it, because there are some cases where some people just don't care to submit that paperwork. And it's fine, it's just that ten, twenty years down the line, they might say, okay, we'd like to sell this now, let's go get our zoning, actually, the bank would ask, some bank would call the zoning administrator and say, hey, we'd like to get these, this list of documents. And they'd say, oh, where's the zoning letter of compliance, and if we were to change that, we'd be saying, they never did it. We're not gonna issue one, and then that bank would probably say, we don't want to lend the money, or there'd be some additional burden on the, the lending to, to get some kind of documentation that the bank would accept. That's where the, that's where the stick would be, I guess, and the carrot and stick, I guess, you know. If you don't, what we'd be saying is that if you don't certify that you've done this, somewhere down the line, when you go to sell, you're gonna run into an issue with the lender.
You're already certified, would you give them a certificate of occupancy right now?
I think it's pretty rare that people decide not to, to turn this in, Shelley had a name of one builder who doesn't submit them. That's the only one she could come, it's more or less, you know, it's self-certified, there's not a lot of, any builder can just say, yeah, I did it. And so it's, the onus is on the builder to be honest about it. I don't know, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling on it, either, maybe it's worth continuing to consider if we're not a hundred percent sure on what everything means, but
I can say, I was gonna say that too, the language seems fine to me, and we can pick that up as the, you know, as, as the planning commission to say, okay, now we'll move forward, and then we can come back and give you guys a report on where we feel we can go. But at least there's some movement towards attaching sort of an energy guideline to this certificate of zoning compliance, which Shelley's already issuing. And not that, again, it's only consider requiring, and I think that's the wording we, because we're kind of, Shelley would be here, that would be great, but I, I,
Where, where
There's no enforcement anyway.
Where does it just, it kind of come from, state?
It all comes from the state then, yeah.
So we're already
And, but no one's enforcing it really anyway, so it's, we're already beginning on sort of a wishy-washy territory, other than saying maybe we can consider requiring Shelley, when she issues this certificate of zoning compliance, that she asks that the builder is building it energy code requirements, and if they don't, it's really the builder doesn't, I don't think, the builder, it's almost like we would compare this to historical society.
If I could, let me, let me interrupt. What I want to say is, I, I don't think we want to debate this too much more tonight. I, I would say, let's leave the consider requiring here. Let's task the, the planning commission with coming up with a bylaw that requires this. And it'll get done or it won't get done, but trying to decide tonight whether or not it has to pass, you know, we have to put this bylaw out or not, could go on all night, so
Yeah, sounds good, Ken.
If, without objection, I would say let's move on.
I just need clarification, what a certificate of zoning compliance is.
Well, it
Is that different than the permit that you, that you put on a piece of twof, or plywood?
I think it's still give assurance to a lender that there's not something outrageously wrong with the property.
It's the end, it's the end of the process, Art.
It's the end of the process.
Okay, now, it used to be called a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
But we changed that, because the certificate of occupancy suggests that we've inspected the property, which we haven't. And so we're saying, this
Okay, that's
complies with the zoning bylaws. Is it a hundred percent finished? We don't know. It, it's a town liability issue.
All right, Joe, did you have something, you, you hit on this point?
Okay.
So, uh, that gets us through, I think, all the energy stuff that the planning commission brought up. Uh, the other part was on uh, earth resource extraction. And the planning commission was requesting that, um, we add something that, um, when new excavation uh, operations are started, that they are designed with an eye toward eventual reclamation of the land when operation ceases, is that?
We thought your language was good on this point.
Okay, and that language is, let's see.
The state doesn't require that already?
The state does require that, but, uh, you know, this is gonna trigger Act 250, a strong statement in the town plan will feed right into the Act 250 process.
Okay.
So what I added was, uh, bylaw should require that new gravel extraction operations be designed with the goal of reclaiming land when operations end.
Do you do that?
Yeah.
Are we all right with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, then, if, uh, does that satisfy the planning commission in terms of the letter that was submitted to the select board?
Yes, we, we think, we think that's fine, that's a good resolution, and I think we have a good town plan, all of our assignments for the next period are laid out in that plan. Let's get to work.
Good, good. All right, let me walk through here real quickly then, uh, see if there's anything that we haven't discussed. Okay, there's that one. Oh, uh, this one, repair the ice rink and reinstall it at Cleveland Park in winter months. Uh, we had a request from the, the rec committee that we remove the at Cleveland Park, because they were considering moving it to Howard Park. We talked about this a little bit here, and some of us here feel that, uh, if we put the ice rink back up, it should be in Cleveland Park.
Just for better exposure for the children as well, you know, it's kind of hidden away up there.
Um, I talked to, uh, Barbara Marino on the rec committee and told her that the select board was leaning toward leaning uh, the Cleveland Park part in there, and she didn't have a lot of heartbreak with that, so I would say
Didn't we just level that ground? Didn't we just prepare that?
It's gonna be leveled.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've been talking about it, we haven't done it yet, yeah. So, uh, if there's agreement there, we're gonna leave this in.
I think I could create, certainly visible.
Well, too, you kids can walk to it.
The recreation committee requested this change. Um, the recreation committee is responsible for overseeing the parks, they recommended, uh, the recreation committee advises the select board on matters regarding the operation magnus of both the towns municipal parks, they don't actually uh, have responsibility for them. So without objection. And then that's the stuff we've been talking about. Couple of typographical changes that I mentioned. Z A stuff we did. Moved that statement. Gravel operations. Okay. So that's everything. Are we all on board with those? All right, then, I am gonna hit save. Uh, we have completed the legal requirements, uh, in terms of hearings. Uh, at this point, we can move to adopt this town plan. Motion from Art to adopt as the new town plan, the draft edited tonight. Second, from Ken. Any other discussion?
Is it possible for us to throw any more discussion, or is that up to you, five members only?
This is up, up to the board.
Okay.
Oh, and actually, I should have, uh, said the hearing closed a couple minutes ago. But, no, let me hear, let's hear what
Well, it's only that it, it's still sticking on me that, that, that energy committee is even involved in just Brock. In other ways, people can save money right here in town, and I'm wondering why we wouldn't also give that to both Shelley and, when you're dealing with local agencies like Brock, my grandmother got her roof redone. It just seems like we've already got that help with the Z A and this, this new energy committee, why wouldn't we keep the same relationship with other energy saving, you know, efforts? Uh, why don't we keep Shelley involved in Brock as well as Neighbor Works, and if it's replacing windows, you're still saving energy, to me, it doesn't seem to be that. They seem like they should go hand in hand again, both of those. I just don't know where we'll be in eight years, and I love for this, otherwise, I love everything, it's just that that's the last thing I would think. Geez, why would we pull that out, when we already left some energy savings with both the Z A and the energy committee? Why wouldn't we also give the windows, Neighbor Works, Brock's, new roof? And if Shelley decides, I mean, it's, it just seems like she's so proactive and she wants the responsibility of doing it, I don't know why we wouldn't want someone right here in the building the same, the same exact argument of the one before. Uh, energy savings and so forth, that's all.
Yeah, um, uh, my thought there was that, uh, for new buildings, energy efficiency in buildings, the, the zoning administrator is handing out permits, it should be very easy for her to, for her to hand out information. The low-cost weatherization stuff, I don't see people who need low-cost weatherization as coming to the zoning administrator. There, there are people over here in the village who just need somebody to knock on their door and say, did you know you can get your windows insulated for free? That's what I've been pushing the, the energy committee to do.
And again, my, my argument is we don't know who they are, and we don't know how long they'll be here. But we do know Shelley or some zoning administrator, some zoning administrator will be here. So knocking on doors or not, at least we've got something permanent, rather than something where the town's not recognizing a committee, that's all. It's the same argument.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion to adopt the town plan? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Okay. Congratulations, guys.
Well, thank you for everything. Thank you for hearing us.
Oh, you bet. Good night, everybody.
Thanks for coming in. All right, we are to other business, does anyone have any other business? Okay, reviewing action items, um, last uh, meetings, Dave was gonna schedule meetings with the engineering companies that provided, um, quotes on the initial phase of the initial phase of water line replacement.
Thursday at nine o'clock.
Those meetings have been scheduled for this Thursday. And, uh, I said I would put that stuff, I had just gotten about low-cost internet for people on the web, and I did that. And then tonight, uh, I, I guess it's just kind of something to consider, but yeah, we should put the draft budget up on the web so that, uh, people can start looking at that earlier. Anything else?
Where do you think that new truck at? New Chevy?
I don't have any information on it.
I just wonder.
Okay.
I actually see it all together.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Oh, one thing, um, I happened to go up to the shed the other, new garage the other day, and Mike was up there. And the windows is all wicked lot of condensation, the windows all find out in the garage itself.
Mm-hmm.
And he was gonna check on, uh, Dave, who the heat guy was. I don't know what the deal was, it's something about a wicked large amount of, uh, moisture involved. And I, I just, I hadn't heard anything about, very social.
It was just on the glass you seen it, that was it? The glass was five percent?
The glass in the old window, you couldn't see through.
Wow.
High humidity.
And it was running right out of there.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I didn't know about that. I know it happens in my house, if I don't clean my fresh air system filters often enough.
Okay, then we're gonna have the, the heat company up there.
Okay, good.
I don't think, I think that we should be in the warranty for a million dollar notice.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we haven't been in there long. Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Art?
Second.
Second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.